Good evening. Meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, Wednesday, July 21st, 2021. In the Coit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. It is 6:00. We are broadcast live on local channel 18, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, I would ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from our meeting on July 7th. I have read them, have no changes. Any changes?
No changes.
If none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So be it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, new business. We've got Mashpee Commons Development Agreement, Proposed Community Action Activity Center Overlay District, Review of Neighborhood Design, Including Proposed CAC Setbacks and Lot Coverage, Dimensional Requirements, and Discussion of Proposed CAC Maximum Densities and Building Height.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney with the firm of Nutter, McLennan &amp; Fish, and here on behalf of Mashpee Commons. Joining me this evening is Douglas Calphels, who's a principal at Union Studios, who you'll hear from shortly, and Tom Ferranti of Mashpee Commons, who also will be taking part in this evening's presentation. As the board may recall, we were previously before you, I think it was on June 30th, where we had a discussion regarding the proposed subzones as part of the Community Activity Center zoning overlay and the uses that were described within the proposed overlay. Following that meeting, we discussed that this meeting would be the next one, where we would provide some background on traditional neighborhood development, which serves as the design and guiding principle behind the proposed community activity center, and then talk about some of the dimensional requirements which are tied into that design principle that are part of the proposed zoning. I'm going to turn this over to Douglas and to Tom, and just a minute to walk through the presentation. We did provide, which hopefully you've had an opportunity to review, some additional information in advance of tonight's meeting. We provided that last Friday to give a little bit of background regarding traditional neighborhood design. We provided a draft of the proposed regulating plan, a draft of the proposed table of contents for the design guidelines, which will come later. That will be part of the Cape Cod Commission review and the regulatory development agreement review for the project. And then we also provided some additional detail on a larger scale of some of the figures that are attached to the proposed zoning. As was indicated in the letter that we submitted, it is our intention to present to you tonight, take any comments that you have, try and respond to that this evening, and then take a pause in this process so that we can get a little further along in the development agreement process, where some of the impacts will be further reviewed. I know that's been a topic of conversation, and so we'd like to move further along in that process and then come back to the board and continue to resume conversations surrounding this proposed zoning. Obviously, if questions occur to you in that break, we would welcome to hear through your town planner any questions, comments that you have, and we can continue to be prepared when we come back to you once we're a little further along in the development agreement process. So what I'd like to do right now is turn the podium over to Douglas, and then to Tom, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
So again, my name is Douglas Calphels. I'm partnered with Union Studio Architecture and Community Design in Providence. So just following on what Eliza said, we thought it would be good to step back for a moment and do a little bit of an overview of the design principles that informed the sort of zoning, the draft zoning amendments that we're recommending to help give some context to why it is that they, why they are what they are, and why they're different from what your conventional residential and commercial zoning for the area might be. And so we thought we would start, I'll give a little introduction about our firm very briefly, but then really talk about what is traditional neighborhood design, and then why is that relevant on the Cape and specifically in Mashpee? And then get into a little bit about, as I think the meat of the discussion, what traditional neighborhood design principles mean with respect to density, lot coverage setbacks, things like this, and why those standards might be a little bit different in order to accomplish the design goals that we have for the neighborhood. So very briefly, my practice, we were founded in 2001. We're Providence-based, and we're very fortunate that in those 20 years, I can't believe it's been 20 years frankly, but that we've worked on projects around the country, and most of them focused on community and neighborhood planning work that we do. We're both, we're a group of architects and planners, and so we get involved both in the neighborhood design, as well as the design of the buildings and the architecture that inhabit them. But our passion for communities really starts there and has from our beginning. When we were founded in 2001, my partner and I, who'd spent our time sort of working in Boston and New York on large institutional projects, we sort of came to the conclusion that it was out in our communities as a whole that Rome was burning, and for us, we wanted to found a practice that was about, in large part, combating sprawl, and more importantly, making civic contributions to the kinds of neighborhoods and communities that we frankly grew up in. And so that really was how we came together and how our firm started in the first place. And we're really driven by those values to today. For us, community and sense of place and sustainable design really is the nexus that makes great, you know, long-term value, and we recognize that those kinds of efforts take often an immense amount of time and investment of energy. And, you know, we're thankful, over that time, we've been able to be somewhat generalist in the sense that we do the neighborhood design, we also design the homes, we design often the civic buildings, the businesses, the residences that make those places whole and complete. And it takes, I think, an expertise in all of those kinds of things in order to do it well in the long run, and we've been, I think, very lucky that we've been able to do that over the years. And so we're thankful and fortunate to be able to be involved in this project as well. So what is traditional neighborhood design? I will, this slide I will read, I will not read all the slides, I promise you, but I think it's relevant. You know, traditional neighborhood design is a compact mixed-use neighborhood where residential, commercial, and civic buildings are within close proximity to each other. It's a planning concept based on traditional small-town neighborhoods. And the variety of these uses really encourages businesses, civic buildings, and commercial establishments to be located within walking distance of mixed-income residential neighborhoods and served by a network of paths, streets, and lanes designed for pedestrians as well as vehicles. So that really is the basis of this sort of idea, and believe it or not, this sort of concept and this sort of way of thinking about neighborhood design really began about, I don't know, 35 years ago or so. It's nascenty, and when you think about that relative to the history of this particular project, it's very relevant, I think. So this is a very blunt diagram, I will admit, but the notion really is intended to be a little bit blunt, which is to say, you know, the way we've developed over the last 50 years has largely been in these very isolated sort of pockets where we might do a neighborhood of homes in one place, a neighborhood of townhouses someplace else. Our schools, our businesses, and things tend to be relatively segregated, and that's sort of loosely represented by the top half of the diagram. And traditional neighborhood design contemplates something that's a bit more integrated, where many of those things, instead of being largely separated, are within a network of streets that are connected to each other so that they're easily accessible and not so diverse. And I think we're all generally familiar with these kinds of patterns of development. We've all seen them in the communities, in any communities we've been in across the country. And it's not to say that they're wrong, they're a pattern of development that occurred for reasons of economy and a number of things over the years. But, you know, an example is we have our, you know, we might have a townhouse development in one place, our single-family home someplace else, you know, our retail on streets, you know, separated as individual buildings with parking in front. And this is, you know, in large part, the way that, you know, much of our land has been developed over the last 50 and 100 to 100 years. And so those patterns really are about separated, segregated land uses. The housing types generally are not, have not been historically very well-integrated compared to our historic villages. The lot sizes tend to be a little bit bigger. That dispersion of uses tends to favor the automobile, meaning I get in my car and I drive to, you know, the CVS or whatever to get what I need. Generally speaking, it's reasonably expensive infrastructure per unit because we are spaced out a little bit and the lots are a little bit bigger, and there's, you know, less pedestrian and bike infrastructure that connects those things together. And traditional neighborhood design really looks to mix those into a single vibrant place. That's really the goal. So some basic principles about traditional neighborhood development, you know, defined in large part by walkable distances, you know, quarter-mile range from neighborhood into a center, is largely the goal. That's, you know, a comfortable walking distance. You know, mixed-use and mixed-income housing options, meaning we're mixing a variety of different housing types within a neighborhood, and that includes apartments, single-family homes, small cottages, and maybe a small attached duplexes and townhomes, and all of those things living together in a neighborhood and not as separate pieces. Compact village-like residential neighborhoods, common public open space that's threaded through those neighborhoods for people to gather and for us to interact and be social, and that includes, you know, playgrounds, open space, places for events, and even urban plazas and cafes like you see in Mashpee Commons at the moment. And then, you know, accommodating pedestrians, bicycles, and transit in the streets and networks that connect all of those things. Oops, sorry. So the benefits really are, we're concentrating compact residential, ideally where infrastructure already exists. The increased density generally means less land is used per resident or per unit, which conserves pretty valuable open space and habitat, generally speaking. Safe, walkable, bikeable streets, variety of housing options choice, and affordability is really built into that, and connectivity and mixed use is creating a real sense of place. So why TND on the Cape and in Mashpee? I stop here for a moment. In 2018, we were hired by the Cape Cod Commission after they did their regional plan to begin having conversations on the Cape as a whole. So we spent about 18 months in communities throughout the Cape, from Sandwich all the way to Orleans, having conversations with the community about neighborhoods and how you can begin to design density in ways that respect and respond to the character of the various communities. And in the context of that work, we did a lot of research about the housing sort of challenge on the Cape. And so, you know, and that was important for us to understand, and I think it's important in the context of Mashpee Commons as well. You know, 82% of the house, I know you've seen some of these before, but 82% of the housing on Cape Cod is detached, single-family. Predominantly, historically, larger lot developments have created, and the future of those creates fewer new homes than are needed, and generally at higher prices. There are larger lots, there are larger homes. And we all know that seasonal homes are making up a significant and increasing portion of the housing on the Cape, and there's a significant portion of those seasonal homes that are vacant for most of the year. So it's, it does result in fewer and fewer residential options for many residents, and we heard sometime, you know, several meetings ago, a young woman who was discussing exactly that challenge, and we've heard that in communities throughout the Cape as we've had these conversations. At the same time, median home prices, they've obviously been increasing, but household income really hasn't on the Cape. So that really is starting to exacerbate an already-present challenge. And it is, as we know, causing, you know, some people to have to look elsewhere, which of course is a challenge. And I think this is a really important piece, you know, with little remaining undeveloped or unprotected land, you know, conventional larger lot development that might only be generating a unit per acre or so may not be a long-term sustainable strategy for solving that housing challenge. And so alternative strategies might be important to consider in the right places. So I think that really is the framework that led to, and I know you've seen some of these slides, the Cape Cod Commission's regional plan, which where they began to think, all right, let's start thinking about how we accommodate that kind of density and housing choice and options in centers, existing centers of activity. And this was a transect that they obviously did that described the sort of place types along the Cape, and they identified community activity centers as being those places that have existing infrastructure and already existing certain amount of activity where it would make sense for, and where it would make sense and would support investment in mixed-use and mixed-income development. And this map just happens to be from the Cape Cod Commission's sort of analysis, these are the various community activity centers that were identified as part of their, part of their work. And what I think is interesting is the points that they make about what defines a community activity center seem to resonate pretty well with the idea of the traditional neighborhood design principles, right? Develop infrastructure necessary to support greater density and mix of uses, including access to transit. Oh, sorry, I skipped a slide, going back. Encourage mixed-use commercial and residential development in a compact form to support a vibrant downtown. Encourage development at a human scale that facilitates interaction and a sense of community. Develop infrastructure and integrate parks and streetscapes that enhance the built environment and provide community gathering spaces. I realize I'm reading a few more slides than I said I would, but I'll try to move on. So, and I think, you know, I, what I like about that is, you know, when you look back, this is the plan from 1986 of Mashpee Commons, and back then, basically at the outset of the sort of traditional neighborhood design movement, this plan was already conceived of as exactly that kind of place. I mean, they were, this was really envisioned, and this was, by the way, I'd love to say I was involved in this, I would have been 15, I think, at the time. So, but I think it's remarkable that the vision for this over time has remained largely, largely the same. So I think now let's talk a little bit about traditional neighborhood design and density, coverage setbacks, et cetera, and I think we want to start at the highest level and talk a bit about, you know, how the density was approached, sort of walk through that, and then, and I'll have Tom step up to take that piece of the presentation, and I'll come back to go through sort of the lots and setbacks and things of that type. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Douglas. As mentioned, my name is Tom Ferranti.
I am with Mashpee Commons. I'm sorry that you're stuck with me tonight and not Buff. Last time I was supposed to give the presentation and he had to do it for me, so sorry you've got me tonight. One of the things that has come up in conversation on a couple different instances, instances, is really, how did we arrive at some of these parameters that are established in the proposed zoning bylaw? Really the density, the residential density, the commercial density. And one of the things that we had to look at in a situation like this is it's different than a DRI. A DRI has a prescribed building program on a prescribed building footprint, and you can measure the density, you can tell you exactly what's on that building on that lot. Development agreement is slightly different, where it provides and establishes a framework that provides flexibility but predictability through the process. And with a development agreement, and what we've done with our proposal is establish the zones, the core of the transition in the area with the parameters. But we had to establish the parameters, at least some concept of parameters, in order to do some of the other pieces that are associated with the development agreement process, such as the proposed zoning bylaw, a fiscal impact study, traffic, things of that nature. And so we had to take a look at what we were going to try and do in those areas. And the first test fit that we did was really look at what we have currently in Mashpee Commons. And we've said on a couple different instances, occasions, that what we're trying to do is continue what we've already started, and this is the best example of what we want to build. So we looked at a snapshot of really the acreage associated with where our current residential buildings are located in Mashpee Commons. We have 77 units within Mashpee Commons. When you take into account the roads, the parking, the sidewalks, there's even a small pocket park in this area. When you look at all of those components together in this area, it works out to a little over four acres, 4.25 acres, and with 77 units, that equates to 18 units per acre in the core area. If you extrapolate that 18 units per acre over the 58 acres that we've proposed for the core area, works out to just over 1,000 units. The same thing with the commercial. In this area, because it's mixed use, we have approximately 40,000 square feet of commercial space, which works out to between 9,000 and 10,000 square feet per acre of commercial space. Again, extrapolating that over the course of the 58 acres, takes you to a little over a half a million square feet of commercial space. And one of the things that I think it's important to note here is that we're not talking about all new, and there's been sort of some misinformation out there that we're planning to build 1.2 million square feet of new space and 1,700 new units. But the way that the language is written in the bylaw, it's actually a total. It's a parameter that's established by the bylaw that establishes a maximum amount of commercial space. Now, we currently have in Mashpee Commons about 360,000 square feet of commercial space already built. So the 700,000 square feet that's indicated in the proposed zoning bylaw would not be on top of the existing, it would be inclusive of the existing. So we knew that the sort of preliminary test fit that we did really needed to be expanded a little bit in order to look at the various zones. It's a little hard to read this, so we'll go in a little bit, but what this shows is that we ran some proposed test fits based on the different building heights, different makeup of building mixtures, various footprints that the buildings could be, which allows, which would then present, you know, provide certain amount of commercial square footage and a certain number of residential units for each area. And this follows along with the zoning bylaw with maximum building heights, maximum building footprints. In the core area, which again is approximately 58 acres, it's the existing Mashpee Commons commercial center, expanding up to Joe's Fishing Road, and then a small portion of the East Steeple Street neighborhood. And one of the things that we wanted to demonstrate with this, with the test fit, and where it gets, you know, a little bit tricky, is that there are multiple different ways to make up a building that's anywhere from one to four and a half stories. You could have a building that's a single-story structure, you could have a two-story building that's a mixed-use building or all residential or all commercial. We have a little bit of everything in Mashpee Commons right now. Within the last three years, we built our first multi-story building that's all residential units, which was the first time that we had done something without a commercial component in it. And we took this and we ran this case study about how we would use varieties of building heights and varieties of building footprints to come up with this example of what the commercial square footage could be. The building heights, as you'll see on the document, it's not populated by all five-story buildings. The reality is that there are very few five-story or one-story buildings that would be proposed in the core area. It would be a special circumstance that we would locate buildings like that. The predominant building height would be two, three, and into four stories, which is already what we have for the most part in Mashpee Commons. We have various footprints. We have footprints down to 2, 3,000 square feet. So again, it's a little bit hard to say this is exactly what would be built because there are a lot of options that are possible based on the building footprints and the square footages. But in this example, what you can see with the core area is that we end up with approximately 413,000 square feet of new commercial space when added to the existing commercial space in the core area. It works out to 673,000 square feet and change of total commercial square footage. And we use that and other various examples of these test fits to come up with the parameter that's established in the zoning bylaw with a maximum total commercial square footage of 700,000 square feet. We did the same thing with the residential units. If you look at the different constitutions of the building, the different building heights, the different building footprints, you come up with 953 units in this example. When added to the existing, it's 1,030. And the interesting thing is, in this instance, you know, looking at the dwelling units per acre, running these test fits, the dwelling units per acre in the more elaborate investigation of density worked out to roughly what the initial snapshot was of our existing residential density of 18 units per acre. It ended up being slightly less. I'll, I'm going to skip ahead to the edge area, simply because this one was done slightly different. The edge area, we really looked at existing residential developments in the town of Mashpee. We have 77 units that we've identified, proposed for the edge area, and we started by looking at some of the other larger residential developments in town to see what their dwelling units per acre ended up being with their acreage. And we use that kind of as a guidance to establish what the density would be for the edge area. And the edge area is only residential. There's no commercial allocated in the edge area per the proposed zoning bylaw. And really what that left us with was the transition area. And the transition area really is where we go from that high-intensity core commercial center to the edge area. And again, using the test fit where you have a variety of building makeup, building heights, and a variety of building footprints, that's how we came up with the commercial square footage and residential units for the transition area. And I, one of the other things to note is that there are checks and balances that are built into this process, and so based on what we've proposed in the bylaw, we couldn't come in and build all five-story buildings because we've established parking ratios in the proposed zoning bylaw, and those parking ratios have to be established and have to be met on the site. So as you're, as you're thinking about what would go on these sites, just know that those pieces have been contemplated with all of the various documents that all tie together to show really what would be built, at least in the commercial center, is an extension of what is already there. And with that, I will turn it back to Douglas to get into more of the lower-level view, getting more into the human-scale description.
So I think, I think the building heights are an important thing to chat about at the moment relative to the test fit and the density that Tom just shared, because I think one of the important pieces of this, and Tom alluded to, is that while we are providing in the zoning what the maximum building heights are for each district, you know, the concern, of course, and I can appreciate this, is when it's allowable, the tendency is to think, well then, you know, it's likely that we're going to build everything at that scale, right, or could conceivably build everything at that scale. And so I'll go into that in a moment, but the building heights are shown here with a little more information than was in the draft, initial draft bylaws that we gave you, but the concept being that the maximum building heights obviously increase in height between the edge area and the core, with the core being at four and a half stories, transition at three and a half, and edge at two and a half. But per Tom's, what Tom alluded to, if we, if you look at how the density was calculated, you know, there's only a very small percentage in the core, so we're in the core at the moment, that are one-story buildings, and a very small percentage that are contemplated at the four-and-a-half-story height, as Tom alluded to.
Be quiet. Be quiet, please.
Excuse me?
As Tom alluded to, the, you know, the idea would be that taller, the taller buildings there would be reserved for special instances, let's say a hotel or something like this, and that the majority of the buildings in the core are intended to be between the two and four-story height. And, you know, as the core grows, as Tom alluded to, you know, much of the development is intended to be at a scale familiar to the center of Mashpee Commons. Now, you know, there might be another half-story above here with dormers, but that would be the scale of building that we're contemplating as sort of the primary sort of fabric for the remainder of the core as it grows, with obviously some exceptions. And the transition is similar, meaning the, at the extremes, there are relatively few homes that are in the, and mixed-use buildings that are in the one-story and four-story range, with the majority of them being in the two-to-three-floor range. And certainly in the edge, where it's predominantly residential, you know, the majority of the homes are in the two-story range. And providing that opportunity for flex, for a variety of heights creates the kind of texture and place that I think these kinds of neighborhood, makes these kinds of neighborhoods as rich as they are. So I wanted to talk a little bit, moving past the building height too, the proposed lot coverages and setbacks, and how traditional neighborhood design lots are different from what, you know, conventional suburban lot approach is typically. So here is a sort of a contrast, just very quickly. This is, your R3 zoning is about a one-acre size, it's a 40,000-square-foot lot in R3. So this lot is just a prototypical example of a, just over a 40,000-square-foot lot with a home on it. This is a very typical way of, you know, that we see residential developed in communities all over, including the Cape. And this is just a pictorial diagram of a potentially a typical traditional neighborhood design lot. And you can tell already, you know, you can see already what that means. And I'll just, this is a useful, just quick photograph that sort of contrasts these a little bit side by side. These lots are obviously nowhere near one acre, and if they were, this sort of comparison would be even more extreme. But you can see already, just if you compare that block to this block, there's twice the residential density in this neighborhood than in the one across, across the way. And, you know, it's not that the character of these places is... And, you know, it's not that the character of these places is unpleasant, right? This is, this is a way of creating a kind of community place that's just a little bit different than the way we might typically do, do things. And the goal is to create a kind of neighborhood experience that is akin to this. And this is sort of the alternative, which, again, we're relatively familiar with. So, the typical residential zoning here is R3 and R5. The minimum lot sizes are 40,000 and 80,000 square feet with fairly large setbacks and relatively small lot coverage. But a 20% lot coverage on a 40,000-square-foot lot is a fair amount of lot coverage. That's almost 8,000 square feet of home and impervious area potentially. And on an 80,000-square-foot lot, that's, that's, you know, even bigger. Again, it's not to say that this is, this is a wonderful way, these are wonderful communities and always have been, and many of us have lived in them throughout our lives, including, including me. But for a, for a traditional neighborhood design, it's definitely very different. So, the minimum lot sizes in a traditional neighborhood could be all the way down, and this is what's articulated in the zoning bylaw, all the way down to 2,500 to 3,600 square feet versus 40,000 in a, in a traditional or in a conventional lot, suburban lot. Similarly, the front setbacks, side setbacks are understandably less. And you can see that even here, the proximity of the homes together are slightly different than we would see in a typical neighborhood. And, but as a result, lot coverages are inherently a little bit bigger. My lots are smaller, but it's, you know, it's not necessarily that we're always living in significantly smaller homes. They're just configured it a little differently, and our open space and our common space is allocated elsewhere potentially in the community. And I share this example, just as one example, that, you know, the, the goal with the zoning is to provide flexibility in providing a range of potential housing types within the same community. So, this is a neighborhood that we designed in Rhode Island. It's a series of small cottages that are everything from standalone, single-family homes to duplex to triplex. And all of these live in the same pocket neighborhood with a little common green. But this is a great example of a couple of buildings that are right about 10 feet apart. Their, their footprint is probably around 800 square feet, 850 maybe. This is exactly what's contemplated by zoning that would say, and that's a very small lot, that would say, all right, that home has 60% lot coverage and might only have five-foot setbacks. But at the same time, that same zoning might allow this kind of neighborhood with larger homes that might have 15-foot, 20-foot separation between the buildings, slightly larger lots, and potentially slightly less, you know, lot coverage as a whole. So, the idea is that we're providing zoning that allows for us to create both this condition and this condition within the same neighborhood. And that's really, that's really the intent. Now, in addition, in the zoning, we have specific, you know, conventions around townhomes because attached homes in a neighborhood, again, it would be wonderful if these were integrated into the broader community. And in the lower example, this is a project that we did as well. You can see there are single-family homes in the back, and there's actually another one here. But this is a set of townhouses that lives cheek-by-jowl with single-family homes. And this is another, and this building right here happens to be that plan. And you can see that the lot coverage and the setbacks and things for a townhouse kind of configuration are very much, you know, different, and they're a little tighter. And, you know, you're typically, the expectation for yard space and things like that is a little different in a townhouse configuration versus a single-family home. And so, the zoning that we proposed reflects that. I come back to this image only because I would say that one other thing to note is, in the span of this lot that you sort of see right here, you can almost already visualize, and in the span of that lot, there's already, you can almost imagine that you could get three homes within that same dimension. And one of the big differences is that, you know, one thing that's missing along here is there aren't any driveways that are cutting in between the houses, right? We do have them here. And the reason I bring that up is, I think, one of the things that came up in conversation in a number of the presentations earlier was this discussion about alleys. What are they? How do they, what do these things really mean, right? Alleys are a really important piece of what it, what it takes to create this kind of village character. Because if my driveway is not coming in the front of my house, well, how am I parking and how am I getting there, right? So, the idea is, in this sort of, you know, again, a rather blunt diagram, but hopefully describes the intent, you know, here's a conventional, you know, say, townhouse neighborhood and single-family neighborhood, and we each have a road that comes in and driveways that come off. Imagine those driveways all stacking up and running in behind your home. And the roads remain exactly the same, but your driveways get allocated to the back. So, think of alleys as shared driveways that run between, behind the houses or buildings, putting garages and parking at the back of the lot rather than the front, and preserving a continuous pedestrian streetscape and sidewalk without interruptions by driveways every lot. And those, those end up looking something like this, right? So, the houses on the front are here, and the alleys in the back are here. And that's access into, into my driveway. And they are, they are of a variety of widths, but the, again, the access to my parking and everything is from the, from the rear of the lot. And that allows us to create that kind of streetscape and density that we're intending. We did share one diagram in the, in the, in the zoning about those cases just like this, where the houses may front a green versus, versus a street. You know, typically, we have a street here, and that's our way for fire trucks to get in, let's say. In a case like this, the alley in the back needs to provide that access. And when that occurs, meaning when we don't have a street at the front of the home, the alley in the back needs to be designed as a street so that you can get access to the house for emergency and everything else. And I know that was a question, Mr. Bellisini, that you had mentioned previously, so I wanted to make certain that we spoke to that. So, the same, the same set of sort of different challenges present themselves with respect to commercial, you know, design and development. You know, here's, this, again, this is conventional commercial that I think we're all familiar with in neighborhoods that we've grown up with and been in our whole life. And I think we all recognize that Mashpee Commons commercial is a slightly different approach to things. So, your, your commercial zoning right now is C1. And those minimum lot sizes, again, are 40,000 square feet, fairly large frontage. I think the most important piece is that the side setback is 20 feet, right? So, that generally means that between buildings, you have to have a minimum of 40 feet just between the, the buildings themselves. And so, I, and I made a mistake here, that should be 40, not 80. But there's going to be 40 feet between buildings themselves. And that creates, you know, this kind of condition potentially where you have separated buildings with generally the parking in front. And sometimes they're walkable between, but generally speaking, people might go to one shop and then get in their car and drive down the street to another, right? And the idea, obviously, with Mashpee Commons is that the, that the commercial zoning is a little bit different to allow the commercial to be party wall, meaning zero side setbacks so that the buildings can be adjacent to one another. And the zoning suggests that parking doesn't necessarily need to happen on the lot itself, but can be provided around the perimeter. So, that is what gets us to the point where we might say, you might have a lot that might be 100% lot coverage and zero setback to the sidewalk, and zero setback to the adjacent sidewalk, and zero setback to its, to its neighbor in order to create the kind of downtown commercial storefront experience that we're trying to design as part of a traditional neighborhood environment. So, ultimately, the goal of the zoning approach and the design is to create a complete and holistic place that provides an opportunity to live, to work, and to connect to all of those things through walking, bicycle transit, et cetera. And obviously, these details are what we are going to be speaking about with you and the town and Cape Cod Commission in the coming weeks and months. I was, our, our hope was to provide enough of a framework.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Dennis.
You'll have your chance, mister. You'll have your chance.
This is an education, this is an educational meeting. This is not a time for questions and comments. We have a, excuse me, we have a, we've established a standard of decorum in these meetings. If you can't adhere to the decorum in the meetings, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you, please. Not to speak. We have a standard in this, we have a... I want you to listen and learn. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you one more, I'm going to ask you one more time. Sir, I'll ask you one more time, or I'm going to have to, I'm going to have you removed from the meeting.
You do have a chance to speak.
This is an educational opportunity to listen and learn. Thank you. I'm going to, I'm sorry.
Are we okay to proceed?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Dennis.
Well, actually, I, that's sort of leaves it where it is. I, the only thing I wanted to say was to, perhaps, is that this really is intended to just be a broad overview to provide some context to what was proposed. We understand that there will be very detailed conversations still to come, and that's really the intent for your questions, for the community's questions, all of the above, right? This was just to provide a little bit of an overview so that we understand where it is that that came from, because otherwise, it might be a little bit otherwise confusing. So, thank you for listening. I know it was 30 minutes and really appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Okay, questions? Yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
All right. Every building, are you going to have to supply a parking space for every apartment, every housing? And what about the commercial? How are you going to, like, I have a small commercial building, I need six parking spaces. The other commercial building may need ten. Are you going to supply them and they be set up so each apartment or house, some house may have to have two, but at least each of the apartments is going to have a parking space? And how's that going to fit in with the commercial parking spaces? So, it seems like a lot of buildings and not enough parking. Another thing, I'm, this, this is just me. I'm against a five-story building, and I'm focused down. No matter what, what you do, I'm only one person on this board. I don't want to see no five-story building. I'm having a hard time with a four-story building. I could, I could, like, if it was a medical center or a hotel, maybe. Another thing, I don't see no create, no good job. We have retail jobs, maybe the person who owns that store makes money. But most retail people, they're working the carments. They're lucky if they get 20 hours a week, and they're lucky if they get $18, $15 an hour. So, you could build all these houses, and what these houses look like to me, you're going to get people my age moving into them. I don't see, you know, a family moving into. I like the idea of putting more houses on acre, but when they're that close, I don't see me having two kids, two children, moving in there in that type of housing. I want to see yards for families. You know, maybe, I grew up in quarter-acre lots.
Would you please let him speak?
You know, and I think there's too much traffic for this area right here to come out to 28 and 151. No matter what we do around the Rotary, you still, you go down two miles, it's a one-lane boat going north and south, you go up 51, it's only a one-lane going south and east and west. I mean, how are we going to handle all this traffic in this one thing? Those are just my questions, but I'm definitely telling you, just me personally, five-story buildings are all for me. So, I mean, I like the pictures you showed, and they're all two, three-story buildings. And then all of a sudden, we talk about five stories, but Mashpee is not meant for a five-story building. That's just my thing. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. And I think the next meeting, we're talking about parking, correct?
Well, I think the next item on the agenda is how we proceed from here.
Right, got it.
I mean, you saw this weekend, you couldn't park in the Mashpee Commons. I went there to, yes, I went there, here parking, went to all these buildings, but, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me talk to you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Oh, back to the, the height sketch on the here. In each of the building heights, two, three, and four and a half type of, you talk of the, the, the top of the buildings to be varied height. Could you, and I appreciate the architectural variation there. Can you give me what a maximum and minimum height that varies to?
I don't, I can't give you that at the moment, but I can appreciate that.
More than one foot and probably less than 20 feet.
Certainly. And the idea, just so we understand, the idea is to provide some variability in the roof form because that creates the sort of neighborhood character. When everything looks exactly the same, it tends to feel a little cookie cutter. So, typically, in form-based codes like this, you, the building height does get measured often to the spring point of the roof, and then the roof pitch can change, can vary a little bit, so it's not all the same. But you're right, it's certainly possible to provide a range for what that could be or could be constrained to. We haven't done that at the moment, but that's exactly the kind of thing we should be talking about in these conversations, right? Is to say, all right, well, maybe that's a place where we, we talk about what the possibility, opportunities could be there to provide some definition around that.
It's going to vary, but there should be a pretty well-defined range.
Range, right, fair enough.
Just on that same question, if you don't, sorry, Joe. In, in this, it shows a dormer. Is that an occupied space or is that strictly a mechanical space?
So, if it's a half-story with a dormer, that's occupied space.
Yeah, so that varied, that's what I'm talking about, that varied space. If it's an occupied space, is it going to follow the same standard for the floor height as it shows in the other floors?
I'm not certain I follow your question, can you explain?
So, we'll give you, for instance, in the core area, it shows a four-and-a-half-story maximum height. It shows dormers on both sides, and it shows that section there is varied. With the dormers, I get the, the feeling that it's an occupied space.
Correct.
If it's an occupied space, is it going to follow the same height that you show for the other standard spaces?
Yes, 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 I see what you mean. You mean the 10 to 12 feet below, et cetera. Yes, yes, got it, yeah, understood.
I had just a quick question, not to come and harp on your point about the accessibility of the fire engines and whatnot, but with the concepts of putting the alleyways and garages behind.
Yes.
And you, that's been done in other developments in Rhode Island, you said?
All over the country, yeah.
Well, for you, purposely, yeah.
Yeah, sure, yeah, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, yeah.
Just, I was just concerned that maybe if it's packed behind, it's actually, it could get clogged up with cars, and you couldn't get the appropriate trucks.
You know, it's the worst thing, when we have a snowstorm. A plow comes down, plows it to the side, the people have no place to throw it, they throw it back on the street, and then all of a sudden, that car comes down and gets stuck because there's snow there. Then all of a sudden, Jack has to bring his fire truck down there. Oh, Jesus, I can't get by with this car there. I mean, you got to pick up...
Jack just takes it. He just takes it and just throws it.
Jack can't talk about his own fire truck.
Can I just expand upon that? So, I've seen some of those in Pine Hills houses, actually, some versions of this. And if you go over to Pine Hills, you'll see this, this rare alleyway-type concept, and it's actually common in a lot of areas in this country. So, with those type of alleyways, there are restrictions on vehicles in those alleyways.
That's right.
All it is is a matter of enforcement. Vehicles aren't supposed to be there. They're supposed to be turned in the driveway. They can't leave vehicles in the alleyway. It's strictly enforcement issues, and that's how fire departments and municipalities deal with it. I understand, you know, the snow, and that's, that's all part of the whole plan.
It's part of the design.
And we require it anyway because you have to have clear access.
And you design them differently if you were designing an alley down south than you would here for exactly those kinds of reasons. It might be a little bit wider, so there's room for the snow to accumulate, et cetera. Yeah, yeah.
Got to be safe.
Is that it? John?
I, you know, not to pile on, but it's funny because maybe it was just me that, but the picture that I saw of, you know, regarding the alleys.
Yes.
I just didn't like that. So, and I know it's, you call it in an alley, so I, you know, how do you pretty up and what's called an alley? But just the visual of that, the visual that I saw, I would prefer to see something better, a better, you know, schematic or something, better design. So, and again, I, but again, and back on your point, we're still talking four, four-and-a-half stories, right? We're not, so we're not talking five stories?
So, the question came up, I'll just be transparent.
That's just my opinion.
Someone, someone said four-and-a-half stories is in fact the height, but someone said, well, don't call it four-and-a-half stories, it's really five floors, right? So, we're trying to make that equivalency, say, okay, four-and-a-half stories, five floors, meaning it is an occupiable floor. It's set in the roof line so that it feels like a slightly, you know, the eve line is lower, so it doesn't feel like a full five-story building plus a roof, but it is an occupiable floor. So, we're just trying to be transparent and say, yeah, it could be interpreted as a fifth floor. yeah, it could be interpreted as a fifth floor, it's, the design is suggesting it's a half-story, but...
Okay, and just to get back to what I've probably been saying every meeting since they started, was wherever those taller buildings are going to plan to be on the design, you know, I, I think it would be, make a lot more sense if it wasn't at the top of the hill, and if it was, it's all about topography, and for me, that's, that would make it, for me, a lot easier to look at something that is not sitting there above the trees. That's...
Understood.
'Cause I know we're not talking a lot of those structures, or, you know, whatever they are. So, I, but that will, I'm assuming we'll get into the, a little more of the details on those later on. But, thank you.
Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, what, when, when I flipped through your presentation before you presented it, jumped out at me in, in the core zone, the five percent largest building, the four, four-and-a-half, five-story, hundred and eighty units in one building, that's what you're proposing.
No, no, that's a hundred and eighty units total in all of the buildings that are that size.
Okay, it's five percent of all the buildings.
Yes.
I would, I would have equated five percent in the largeness of the footprint, meaning one building.
I'll let Tom speak to that, but I believe it's intended to be five percent of the total buildings would be of that size, and within whatever number of buildings that is would represent a hundred and eighty.
Yeah, again, because this is, it's a, it's a framework, it was somewhat of a formulaic process to come up with this. So, we don't have a plan that says, "There's a five-story building here, and a five-story building here." We don't have a plan that says, "This is the total number of buildings." So, we try to use our existing development as the, as the baseline of percentages. So, if you look at the number of buildings that could be over fifty-eight acres, let's assume for argument's sake that there's fifty buildings, I don't know that there will be fifty buildings, but if there's fifty buildings across that fifty-eight acres, five percent of that total building type would be five stories. Now, of that five percent, using this test-fit example, it would dictate the number, the amount of commercial square footage and the number of units. And again, that's somewhat of, of a, it's a hard thing to answer right now, just because of the different ways that you could make up a five-story building. You know, to Douglas mentioned, you know, a five-story building might be a hotel. If it's a five-story building that's a hotel, there's no residential units in it, and it's all considered commercial square footage. So, that's sort of how we looked at this, as a formula, to try and give some, some guidance and some explanation on how we arrived at some of these parameters that are established in the, in the proposed bylaw.
Thank you.
You got it. Anybody else? Mary?
Hi. So, I agree with a lot of the comments that have been said before, especially the height. I'm really having trouble, whatever you're calling it, four, four-and-a-half, whatever, I, I'm really having trouble supporting something like that. Just for a way of background, if you look at our local comprehensive plan, as it's certified today, the main mechanism for growth management in town, and this was supported by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, was lot size. The forty thousand square feet and the eighty thousand square feet was set to control growth, to, to control growth. So, if we take that away, that mechanism away, we have to replace that with something. The open space incentive development bylaw, which is in our packet, it was attached to my memo to Mashpee Commons, it wasn't meant to be, and I hope that it goes on the website separately. We have a mechanism, it's the open space incentive development bylaw, that talks about transfer of development rights, which means if you want density and you want height, you have to give us open space. What's happened in this bylaw, that open space, I'm gonna tell you, I wouldn't support a bylaw with only twenty percent open space in the way that you have it as buffers. I mean, we're talking real open space, undeveloped land, not in between a street and a parking lot. I mean, something significant, as identified. No, I, I, I like them clapping, so don't, no, I don't care. You can clap, I'm not gonna stop talking.
Mary.
And don't, I've got the floor, sir.
Mary, please.
And I, I have the floor, sir.
Mary.
And the open space off of our open space incentive development plan, we have maps where the town has already approved these. Okay, so I don't wanna see buffers and strips of green, that's ridiculous. That's not open space. Our open space incentive development plan, you might not wanna use it, okay? But that's what the town approved. So, if you want approval for something like density and height, take a serious look at that, because I am. The other thing is, I'm very concerned that you are limiting square footage and units by parking. If I understand you right, that was the limiting factor, it's, it's, parking is going to limit what you're gonna be able to build?
It's not a limit, it's, it's a check and balance. And so, as you, as you advance, as you advance this process through, using all of the documentation that we put together.
Okay, I'm gonna want a different check and balance.
It's just one of the various checks and balances. Parking is a check and balance, but, you know, really, all infrastructure is a check and balance.
I'm gonna want a different check and balance than parking. Parking can be waived, parking garages can go up. That, that, I don't, I don't wanna see that as the ultimate check and balance to the, to the growth. You know, I wanna see codified limits, including height in feet. You can come up with your range, but I want an absolute height in feet, and something about the elevator shafts, and, and any mechanicals that go above. 'Cause we've had several comments from planning board members on that, that wasn't my idea. The last thing is, I think Jack Phelan talked about this, and John referred to it. We, I believe that Jack asked for this plan to be overlaid on a topo map. To, right, to, to show, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're saying, "My highest height is gonna be on the highest part of this land," we wanna know about that, so.
I hope we get that eventually, right?
Well, we asked for a lot of things.
I would think that would be part of the...
In the packet, there were, I had ten questions. I had ten questions. I have no idea if you got this or not, but, you know, I, I eventually want all of these answered. Last thing, I know that this, this was like really awesome, I, I'm assuming that's gonna go on our website. Just in our packet, there were some diagrams missing.
Yeah, they didn't copy through on some of the pitches.
On the lot coverage pages.
Yeah, the lot coverage stuff didn't transfer over.
And it's a very interesting comparison, so just make sure that one gets uploaded. And that's it, thank you very much.
So, we did submit eighteen, eighteen questions, including, including Mary's.
Can I have a copy of that submitted?
Sure. Any other questions?
Who's gonna give it to me? You? Okay, good. If that stuff could get into our packet beforehand, that'd be good.
Evan, anything to add?
No.
Very good.
This was a nice, nicely done.
Yeah, thank you, very informative. Thanks very much. Thanks, Dennis, thanks, Tom, thanks, Eliza. Yeah, next on the agenda, discussion of next steps. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to Evan.
I think the question is, you know, where do we go from here in consideration of the fact that, you know, the board has agreed, and Mashpee Commons has put forth the intention to suspend these discussions and deliberations relative to the proposed zoning until such time as they are further along in their development agreement and application process with the Cape Cod Commission. So, between now and then, I don't know if we exactly have a timeframe. But, you know, what, what occurs between, between now and then? And John and I had had some conversations about what could occur at a staff level between now and then, and it could be, you know, as I had mentioned in a previous meeting, I'm nearly completed with my build-out.
Just explain what that is.
Essentially, I'm looking at each of our zoning districts under our current zoning regulations and developing a rough calculation as to what land area under current zoning remains for development, and the number of dwelling units and/or residential dwelling units in the R3 and the R5 could be produced by way of current zoning, as well as how much commercial, commercial and/or industrial square footage remains to be developed under current zoning. To kind of just put into perspective what we could produce, and what our limitations are to meet needs. And I would like to propose the potential to present that to you with staff review and report and recommendations for the zoning itself as a launching point for future discussions, so that the board is prepared for the, for the commons to return pursuant to their continued deliberations, or not deliberations, excuse me, through their continued process and package development with the commission, so that, you know, the deliberations cease and pause as we've, if we discuss that they would, but we keep some momentum going forward, whereas the board will be prepared with more information from a staff perspective on where we are, and, and where you could go. And it's really just to provide options for you to consider, would be my suggestion.
Yeah, that, that, what it would look like under current zoning has been a question almost at every, at every meeting, so that would be very helpful.
Evan, is there a point that Mashpee has reached that you can't build no more? 'Cause the water, we don't have enough water, or the infrastructure's not...
Did you, and Dennis, what was your question?
There must be a point that Mashpee can't build no more housing, or because we, we won't have enough water, or we don't have the infrastructure to service all that area. Is there a, a set number that we can say, "We can't go past it"?
We're limited by the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw and the available land area. And that's pretty much it. So, we need to make an appropriate assessment of what that means under current zoning, so you can kind of assess how we'd like to proceed into the future to accommodate the needs of residents, of, of, of the local economy, of, of all the things that are impacted by way of development.
What I'm thinking of most important is, with starting new sewer system, I mean, are we gonna build so much that the sewer system...
I didn't hear the first part of your question, because...
What I'm concerned about, with starting the sewer of the town.
Yes.
So, are we gonna reach a point that we, we have too much toilet flushing to the septic system we have, and there's no place to put it? I mean, we're gonna seem to put a lot more nitrogen into the river, even though it may be at five percent. But right now, we're saying, we put one hundred pounds from Mashpee Commons into Mashpee River. With all this development, we maybe put three hundred pounds of five percent. And then you got the cottages down there, where I live, they're putting more nitrogen, even if it's at five percent, but the river can't take.
Yeah, I think I know.
All that, you know, I just, there should be a limit number, we can't go over.
Ultimately, these are, these are impact-related questions that we need to gain clarity on as we move through the process, so you can make an educated decision, whereas you understand what the parameters are by whatever you approve, if anything.
All right.
None of that exists under current zoning. And it's all going into the groundwater by way of septic systems.
Right, I mean, we're trying to correct that.
So, so Dennis, our local comprehensive plan has a target population of fifteen thousand.
That, 'cause I remember doing that, comprehensive plan.
We're at fourteen thousand, one hundred.
Was the limit of the town.
So, there, there is something that limits that.
All right.
So, I just wanna clarify that to the public and to the town planner.
Well, excuse me, the, the build-out projection isn't the limiting factor, it's your dimensional criteria and your minimum lot sizes, the, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to communicate a point to the board. The limiting factor for the build-out projections, excuse me, please. The limiting factor for the build-out projections that are built into the local comprehensive plan are the zoning bylaws that the town approves. That build-out would be different if we had different zoning, so that's my only point.
Thank you. I actually did have a clarifying question. The square footage, like the commercial square footage that's in the proposed bylaw, that includes what's already existing?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I, I thought it was incremental.
Top of that, right?
Certainly not. John, is it, is it split in, somewhere in there, as existing and proposed?
Yes.
It, it is.
It's...
In the, in the, in the presentation they gave tonight.
Yeah, in today's presentation, you'll see that split.
Thank you. Okay. Thoughts on Evan's proposal to come back with the, with the, you know, with, with his assessment of what it would look like under current zoning, and, you know, his assessment of, of the, of the proposed bylaw?
It was just, really just a report on what's proposed and the board's options to move forward.
Well, yeah, Paul Nid's Wiki said that. To, to examine whether this bylaw is good for the town, you compare it to what?
We have.
We have.
Right. So, that's what, that's what you're proposing. I mean, you are the professional in the room. That would...
I'm a professional too, sir.
Professional planner in the room.
Yeah, and I'm a volunteer professional.
That's exactly what I'm proposing.
Thank you. Everybody good with that?
Yep, that sounds good.
Yeah?
I don't think we need to set it as an agenda item, only because, once you're ready, you can let us know, we can put it on the actual agenda, okay?
Although I'd like to have a, I mean, you know me, I'd love to have a deadline.
My intention is to get to you by the, like, the first meeting in September, with the hope of having something produced sooner. Caveat, expecting my third child in the next few weeks. And I might be out of the office, and there might be a disruption, but I have every intention of producing that for you.
Valid excuse.
That's valid.
Can't be called an excuse.
We get it.
Valid reason. All right, great, thank you, Evan. Okay, town planner report.
We just had it.
Yeah, you got it.
RFP update, anything?
Oh, excuse me, yes. I submitted the board's recommendation to the town manager, following our last meeting, at which time he also opened up the, the cost proposals. Weston and Sampson's proposal was actually like, something like twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars less than the other proposal.
Wow.
And it was well within our one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar allocation. So, they, an award was, is being offered to Weston and Sampson. I have notified them of the outcome of the meeting, of, of the scoring, of the town manager's decision, and I have produced a, an award letter for the town manager to sign and submit to Weston and Sampson, for them to accept. That should be done in, in short order, and we'll proceed with the, the completion of the procurement. So, that's good news.
Yep, that is good news. Okay, board member committee reports, Cape Cod Commission?
No, no report.
Community Preservation Committee?
I think you guys are up to date on that. That was the boat ramp, right?
Yes, yep, yep. Design Review?
Yes, we had a meeting yesterday. There were two projects. We heard one was one thirty-one Industrial Drive Preventative Maintenance. They are just moving a lot down from one twenty-nine Industrial to one thirty-one. They just requested to move a sign down the street, and that was approved. Second, more known in the town's, Forty-four Falmouth Road Fashion Foods. That'd be the proposed Wendy's, it's coming in. And they requested a renovation to existing commercial building, assembly for fast-food restaurants, and to change the seventy-square-foot pre-existing building sign out front. And design approved that. Plan may have another issue with that, so I can go over that.
Thank you.
Any other Wendy's update?
It's coming.
I had it.
Oh, okay, all right, 'cause you guys are all kind of joking.
Planner View reviewed the Wendy's building, Forty-four Falmouth Road, as well as an industrial drive property. I feel that the call from the franchisee seeking to open the Wendy's in town, who asked me a very specific question, you know, I, well, I asked him a very specific question. "Are you proposing any modifications to the site plan as approved in the nineteen ninety-six special permit decision?" At which time, the, the answer was no. The plans, and the reason I ask is because any modification of the site plan would require an appearance at zoning board appeals to approve the modification. So, two different pathways here. The plan set submitted at Planner View included site plan modifications. So, the motion brought forth the Planner View, and that was approved, was kind of conditional on a few things. We, we recommend approval if they submit a plan set that is consistent with the ninety-six approval, showing no site plan modifications. And we recommend approval with conditions, but you gotta go to the Board of Appeals for your modification if you proceed with this plan. So, the, some of the reporting on the Wendy's, whereas there was no additional regulatory review, was on the premise that they weren't modifying the site plan. But they may be modifying the site plan, and thus would require approval by the Board of Appeals for those modifications. If, again, I just wanna make very clear, if there are no modifications, they need no further review from the Board of Appeals. Secondly, Planner View Committee reviewed a project at one thirty-one Industrial Drive. It's not even really a project, it was kind of a unique situation. An automotive shop has been operating in a structure that hasn't been approved for such use, and there's also... And there's also a spray booth in the building, there's a number of issues in the site.
Where is this?
It's one thirty-one Industrial Drive. And it's not, the use is allowed in the district, it's just that they're operating without the benefit of a permit with a number of code compliance problems. So like, for example, for their spray booth, or to bring trucks inside, they need floor drains. They have no floor drain, and stuff like this. So the recommendation was table the discussion, meet with the fire department, meet with the board of health, meet with the building department, find a pathway forward for you to rectify those code compliance issues, and then we'll come back to planner view with a full plan set. We also just had a very rough drawing, so no action there, but it's on, I think, FD's radar. And Cease and Desist went out, and we'll be assisting that property owner achieve compliance. And that's it.
Environment oversight did not meet historic districts?
Did not meet.
And...
Did not meet.
Last but not least, did not meet. All right, thank you. Correspondence? Evan, anything you want us to?
Oh, just your typical waterways applications, adjacent town notices, nothing particularly interesting.
How's the nitrogen levels? Good?
The report's the same, yeah.
Four point one, okay.
Okay, anything else?
When's our next meeting?
Next meeting is August fourth. I would just respectfully ask that we try to be respectful to each other during these conversations. Tonight was a very good opportunity to learn, which we had hoped it would be. You know, let's, let's try to be civil and kind and respectful. And I would request that of anyone who's attending to listen and learn. You know, we're all trying to do what's best for the town. We may not all agree, but let's be respectful, kind, and courteous. That would be my request.
I second that.
Thank you. I didn't, I wasn't looking for emotion, but okay, thank you, Dennis. Thank you.
I make a motion with Jaren.
There you go.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.